Glad you're here. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Eureka. We will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement, kind of. Hold on. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as De Roogijji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh my God, look how cute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could get a roll call, please.
Mayor Burgel.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Great. And is there any report out of closed session, City Attorney Luna?
Good evening, Mayor Burgel. There's no report out of closed session tonight.
Thank you. And so tonight, under our mayor's announcements, we did have the Martin Luther King Day presentation with Noel. That's going to be moved to June 4th. Apparently Noel is an excellent baseball player and their team won, so he's playing tonight, so he will not be able to be here. So we appreciate, we'll see him next month. And next up, we have Councilmember Fernandez with a Lemonade Day proclamation. And then David, if you'd like to come on forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation and recognition of Lemonade Day, June 1st, 2024. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide educational event providing children with the opportunity to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking and create a foundation for success in the global economy. And whereas Lemonade Day exists infused today's youth with the spirit of enterprise, teaching the basic business and entrepreneurial skills necessary to become successful contributing members of the community. And whereas Lemonade Day has a core philosophy of spend, save, and share that is implemented by teaching children how to manage their money by establishing a budget, seeking investors, paying for their own expenses, saving part of their profits, and giving back to the community. And whereas Lemonade Day offers opportunities for families, businesses, schools, youth organizations, faith-based communities, neighborhoods, institutes of higher learning, economic development, and government agencies to unite for a common purpose, to train the next generation of entrepreneurs. And whereas the city of Eureka commends the volunteers and participants of Lemonade Day and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding event. And now, therefore, I, Mario Fernandez, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim June 1st, 2024, as Lemonade Day in the city of Eureka and urge all citizens to participate by buying or helping children sell lemonade.
We'd like to thank the Eureka City Council for recognizing this free and fun, community-wide
Is the mic on, David?
Microphone's not on.
Oh, there we go. I'll start over. We'd like to thank the Eureka City Council for recognizing this free and fun, community-wide youth program and event. As of this morning, there were 79 youths registered to own or help operate one of the 45 stands that will be set up throughout the county. Of those, 35 are Eureka youths and 20 of those are Eureka stands. We would kindly ask that all citizens of Eureka participate how and where they can, whether that be positively encouraging a child, patronizing one of the stands, or volunteering to help. For more information, please go to our Facebook page at humblelemonade day dot, or, excuse me, humblelemonade dot day. Remember, Humble Lemonade Day, a dream maker project of the Ink People, takes place throughout the county on Saturday, June 1st, 2024. A map of the stands will be available online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Community Services Supervisor Jim Thomas to talk about the Forest Moon Festival.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. All right. Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm excited to be here on behalf of the Recreation Division to invite you all in the community to the Second Annual Forest Moon Festival in partnership with the Humboldt Del Norte Film Commission. Last year, we saw approximately, oops, one second. Is that going to play? All right, and I wanted to share highlights from last year's Forest Moon Festival to kind of build up the anticipation. Maybe. That's okay.
That is the next slide.
It's supposed to be a video.
Yeah, it's a video. Good guess.
Boy, you're really creating that anticipation.
Building up. Here we go.
It's building.
Drumroll.
Which slide is the video on?
Slide two, right here. All right, highlights, 2023 Forest Moon Festival. Thank you. All right. Thanks to Joseph Carter, our media project coordinator, for putting together that awesome footage. Last year, we saw about 1,000 people come to the park, at Sequoia Park. And a really cool story I heard was from a family from Los Angeles that pulled an all-nighter, got in their car after work on Friday, and made it up to the event. So just a really cool community event. This year, we'll be back for the Second Annual. And we'll be at Sequoia Park on June 1st. From 12 to 3, we'll have an inflatable saber station for the first 400 in attendance, rebel training obstacle course, Color the Galaxy Station, Wise Green Creature Temporary Tattoos, Saber Showdown Game, Hum Bubbles will be there, a costume contest at 2 with prizes, and Cap's Food Truck. Then from 4 to 6, Real Genius Trivia hosts the Forest Moon themed trivia. If any of you have not been to one of their trivias, they're really cool. They do a good job. It's going to be a fun addition to this year's event. And then from 8:30 to 11:30, the Humboldt Del Norte Film Commission will host an out-of-this-world movie in the park. And I hope everyone can make it. And I did bring, Council and Mayor, some inflatable sabers.
Oh, yay.
I don't know if you need to give us weapons right before a meeting.
Fun.
Hope everyone can make it down to Sequoia Park on June 1st. It'll be a really fun day. You bet.
Have green. Green. Oh my God, this is awesome. I didn't do it. Okay, this is very exciting. I have to show my baby. If I can get up. Hold on. There.
Thank you.
How fun, Jim. Thank you so much. Okay, so. Oh, shit. So for mayor's reports, I'm one-handed up here, as you can see. And if that was an expletive, I apologize. May not have been. You may not have heard what you thought you heard. So under mayor's reports, I just want to share my appreciation for Mayor Pro Tim Castellano, who's been filling in for me in my absence, and Councilmember Contreras Deloche, who's also filled in for me. As many of you know, I've been off work for a while. I had surgery on the 25th, finally. And so I'm on the mend. Only four more weeks till I can drive, so that'll be exciting. So I'm back to trying to show up for my life, and I look forward to that. And I just want to appreciate everybody that's reached out to me and has been so kind with your words and phone calls and even food. I appreciate that. So that is my report. I did go to the HCOG meeting, which was really exciting. There's a lot of good things happening with the transit locally. There'll be more to come with that. There's a lot of great things. And with that, that's all I have for today. Been off for a while. So next, our presentation is going to be prioritizing essential services in an era of national, natural disasters, County of Humboldt. And that is with Sean Quincy, or is that with you, Tom? Or it's with the... They gave me the wrong name. But welcome.
I'm standing in for Sean Quincy today.
We're entertainable parts.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Council. I'm Alicia Hayes, County Administrative Officer.
Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works.
And I think I may have the presentation. All right, wonderful. Thank you. Again, I'm Alicia Hayes, County Administrative Officer for the County of Humboldt. And as many of us know, over the last decade or more, the county has seen significant increase in the number of natural disasters impacting our community. These disasters run the gamut from earthquakes to storms to many different fires, many different things. Yes, thank you, Tom. And regardless when these emergency hit, the county and sometimes the state and even federal government need to declare emergencies and seek to capitalize on resource needs in order to respond and support our communities. By its nature, an emergency declaration is a statement saying that the government doesn't have the resources to adequately address the emergency. These emergencies are taking a toll on the county and continue, as we continue to work through our budgets, we're here to talk with you today about where we might be headed into the future. These issues are significant, and they're structural and under the status quo, we simply don't have enough funding to provide the services to the level our community has become accustomed to. We don't want to hide the ball with this group or any other. A potential solution that we are looking into are potential tax measures, a local tax measure, whether it's a sales tax, a parcel tax, or some other revenue generating mechanism. The rest of this presentation will be devoted to explaining how we got here and the impacts we are seeing in Humboldt County. So what is the issue? Later, you'll hear about the many of the impacts, but the essence it boils down to is funding and more specifically, the lack of it. Over the last 30 years, the state has taken over $500 million away from local governments to fulfill its own obligations. These are reportable numbers kept by our Auditor's Office, and it's the result in shifts of local property taxes that are allocated. Annually, we've seen that the number, that number grow, and most recently, it's amounted to $25 million a year. And that number continues to climb as the state continues to clamor away dollars from both counties and city agencies. And as we have all probably seen, as we are intricately aware of the May revise, the state's budget is anticipated to be between $39 to $73 billion, depending on who at the state you talk with. And they are expected to face massive deficits. And in the state's May revise, which came out about two weeks ago, we know that they are looking at significant cuts to local jurisdictions in emergency preparedness and transportation funding. And these were promises that were made to us years ago that they are indicating they no longer plan to fulfill. We know what the cycle looks like, and we can expect that the state will continue to take funding away from local communities while adding more responsibilities to us. At the same time, we have some distinct challenges facing our county regarding 911 emergency response, disaster preparedness, and road repair needs. When you combine these factors, it becomes apparent that we need to protect ourselves from future state takeaways with additional guaranteed resources of local funding to address our needs. The county's not alone in recognizing our needs around disasters. As you all are aware, we've had disaster after disaster over the last decade. The extreme storms in 2017 and 2019 and the December 2022 earthquakes stand out, as well as fires and winter storms that are becoming more intense every year. And this is just a partial list. The county responded to these emergencies, along with all of you, and the responses were intense. Roads were damaged, evacuations were needed, and supplies and services were brought into communities that were impacted. The cycle's likely to continue and possibly happen more frequently and with more intensity. In fact, last June, the grand jury stated that Humboldt County needs to be better prepared for natural disasters. The report notes that our region is especially susceptible to catastrophic events, given the extreme weather fluctuations, wildfire risks, tectonic activity, steep erosive topography, and that climate change exacerbates the impacts of sea level rise. The fact of the matter is that disasters are the new normal in Humboldt County, and we need to adjust to that new reality. When it comes to county government, we have felt the impacts of the disasters most on our roads, which affects residents' abilities to evacuate and our ability to come into the communities who need us to help them. We simply live in an area where the impacts from disasters significantly affect our roads compared to other infrastructures. The slides mention, this slide mentions hardening and upgrading of our roads, and in that regard, it's important to know that reimbursements from the state and federal governments are not the silver bullet. With that, Tom will go over all of our road infrastructure needs.
So as your public works department and many of you probably know, when you get a FEMA reimbursement, they don't pay to improve anything. They pay you to put it back the way it was. And if it failed once, it's going to fail again. And that's where we get into where we need funding to harden our road systems, especially at our failure sites, so that we don't have those repeated failures. We go back, when I started with the county in 1998, looking back over 20 years, we were getting a declared disaster on every, average, every three years. We've had four in the last, since 2022, one earthquake and three storm damages. In 2017, we got hit with over $40 million in damage to our road system, another $15 million in 2019, and another about $15 million in the four disasters since 2022. This impacts the response times that our first responders have getting out to communities. This community, this winter in Redwood Valley was shut off for nearly two weeks, basically getting back and forth on ATVs, shuttling food in and out. And then on the federal reimbursement process, when FEMA comes out and says, "We are providing X billion dollars for this disaster," they are actually not providing X billion dollars for that disaster. 90% of that money that they come out with is going to pay agencies across the nation for former disasters. So on average, we take, it takes us six to 10 years to get full reimbursement on our projects. And it takes about three years to get the approvals unless you're given specific authority in the disaster by the president or the governor to do permanent repairs under emergency opening. It can take three years to go through the federal process to get approvals to actually get to construction. And so right now, we're out, we're looking at, we're running and we're at about $10 million in outstanding reimbursements as of this day. We also look at our changing subjects, our basic pavement condition index. Your state or your city does this, as well as all the cities under the purview of HCOG, they contract for us. We all use the same consultant, so we're on the same table. So a few years ago, we were with the 44 counties that were in the fair condition. The six counties are in good, very good condition, all have their own self-help taxes. We're on our way to the very poor and failed with the road funding that we have now. That's been projected that we'll be down in that category within 10 years if we don't increase our funding. And in fact, over the last four years, they accurately predicted our PCI would go from 56 to 49 if we did not improve our funding, and that's exactly what it did over the last four years.
If I could add one thing in there, Tom, that the folks who are in the green section, those six counties, all have their own local revenue measures specifically dedicated for these purposes of addressing their roads.
And many of them have multiple revenue measures. So just so you can see, PCI, this is a perfect road. It's brand new. That's your PCI of 100. This is where we were probably 12 years ago at countywide, on average. This is pretty close to where we're headed now. Right now, we're at PCI of 49. So you can see, this is, these are typical county roads in our urban areas. In the rural areas, they get even worse. So looking at our pavement analysis, and we just do trial runs, to have a good pavement system, you need a PCI of 70. And why you want that is that's where you minimize your operational maintenance costs because your road system is in decent shape, and it's cheaper to maintain a road in good shape than it is to rebuild a road in bad shape. So if we were going to be in a perfect world, we would need to come up with 500 million over 10 years to get that PCI to 70. And every time we delay maintenance, it increases the cost. So this is where we're headed as a county without doing something about it.
Yep, my turn. So we have been working to tighten our belts, if anybody is listening to me preach to the Board of Supervisors, while still trying to provide the services that our residents expect and deserve. It's a difficult process, and it requires strong community engagement to gauge where the community priorities lie. Last year, we did some specific polling around this, but it was more high-level polling that showed the top concerns of the community in maintaining local streets and roads. In addition, there was a fair number of other various service concerns, as noted on this slide, such as climate action and bus service to addressing homelessness. And now, we want to get a little more granular as we start to look at what funding in a local measure might be utilized for. So we're looking to reach out to folks to gauge their priorities a little bit more specifically. And we know that we've talked a lot about roads today and in the past, but the community might have different needs and priorities than what we've been discussing most recently. And so that is really what we're here for today. Our ask is that we want to hear from folks to help us gauge where the priorities lie and to help us work on creating our budget next year and in the coming years. So we have a QR code here. We ask that folks fill out this survey. They can also go to our website. We'll be sending out physical mailers in the next few weeks, and together, we can create, identify creative solutions that align with our community's priorities to help us face our fiscal challenges in the coming years. And also, we would love to hear of who else we should be talking to. We're going to city councils and rotaries and all of those different groups pulling together, community leader groups and whatnot, but we're really looking to get down into the depths of the community to find out who it is we should be speaking with. So with that, we conclude, and we'll gladly ask any questions.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano? I may have missed this, if you said it. How many total miles of roads does the county have to maintain?
1,207 miles of road.
That's a lot. I applaud your...
Only 900 is paved.
Okay, okay. And have you done, I'm imagining you've done an analysis of kind of like the population density along different roads and things in terms of, you know, like, right? Like what percentage of the roads have a population density of, you know, 30 people or more per mile or something like that?
So we look at the category of road, whether it's an arterial, which is a main road that serves the entire community, a connector which connects local communities to the arterial, and then the local roads, which are a subdivision and minor roads. And so we break them out by that category, and frankly, we focus on the higher-traffic arterial roads. But some of our arterials are very important and are very low volume, like Alderpoint Road, Matol Road, connects the state highway systems. If there's ever a break in the state highway system, there's county roads to get around them. them. And we, yes, we have a number of very, very rural roads, and a lot of those are gravel, and they're not included in this cost because that's, it's a completely different maintenance operation that we do with rock and gravel in our graders.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Fernandez?
I'm very impressed you knew that number right off the top of your head, but I take it, you've been doing a lot of these meetings. Uh, I'm, I'm curious, of those six counties, uh, that you said that have very good roads, uh, you say that they have a dedicated funding mechanism. So I'm curious, are, are those aimed specifically for roads, or is that part of their general fund then?
Some of them are, are mutual. Some are general, some are specific to roads, some have general fund contributions on top of a sales tax to roads, but there's also the development impact fees, um, and, and other things that they, they have out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Hey, thank you for the presentation. It, I have to do is drive the county roads out in the hills to see the state of things, you know? I had a couple of questions. How, how would this tax measure be different than Measure Z? And I guess the first question is, does Measure Z sunset, and does it provide any funds for roads?
Measure Z, at this point, does not sunset. It is a very competitive measure. We've, we've averaged about 670,000 a year on average out of Measure Z. The problem with Measure Z for us is it doesn't allow for any long-term planning because it's an application, annual competitive application. I, I can't put together a 10-year plan based on annual competition.
Yeah. Um, okay. And, and so what, so you think maybe it's a parcel tax, maybe it's a sales tax, we're not sure, you're, you're just in the exploration phase right now?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll be doing polling that will help us to gauge where the community falls in the support of that. As I'm sure you all are aware, a two-thirds specific tax is a high threshold, and there is some legislation, um, currently being proposed that could potentially reduce that down to 55%. So depending on, you know, how the success rate of that is looking, that may gauge where the board goes with a future measure. But, um, in our previous polling, a general tax measure polled well and indicated a success rate.
And, and with that, we would be recommending an oversight committee that made sure that the funding was spent in accordance with the ballot wording.
Oh, that's, that was going to be another one of my questions, is how would there, like a finance, some kind of committee that oversees it? Okay. And have you explored between the municipalities, like, not to say that we get a cut or, or something to that effect, that there's some kind of shared mechanism that our municipalities receive some of that money as part of this, this, this measure? Have you explored that?
We haven't delved in depth. We've heard it and reported it to our board, who will be making the final decision, but the county's needs are very extensive.
Yeah. And one last question. What are you thinking is kind of the, the amount necessary to kind of get us above a, a poorer level of, of road, like 10 million?
Well, the, it, looking at a half cent would be 12 million a year, and that, that's kind of what the boards has discussed in the past in a little bit more detail. Um, you know, one cent would give 25 million, which would go a long way to a lot of roads everywhere.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question. So regarding the PCI, so when you're looking at, you said you've, you know, above 70 is what we want, what percentage of our roads are way lower than that? Because there's, there's a percentage, or there's a point with the PCI where roads have to be completely taken up and completely redone, and then there are other opportunities where you can just do, you know, different types of pavings, loriseal, whatever like that. What percentage would you say are this, of the, the lower category of the ones that you're just going to have to tear it all up and redo and?
Oh, in the county, it's probably 70% in, in the more intensive work, and that, that's anything under 70. That doesn't go all the way down to reconstruction. It's probably more like 30% that's reconstructed. And then when you look at those, we're, we frankly spend most of our money on our better roads, and the other ones are so, such poor condition, there's really not a lot we can do other than try to keep them safe.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else? That was a great presentation. Thank you both so much for being here. We appreciate you. Moving on to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Is there anyone here to, for the public comment?
Hi, I'm Deborah Dukes, and I live on H Street, and I cannot thank you enough for the traffic calming measures that, um, have gone into effect or finally finished on H and I. Um, I no longer have to watch kids crossing to the high school, dodging, forgive me, usually young men, trying to outrun the, the, um, the speed light. You know, I think it maxes out at 50, and they try to get from Wabash to Del Norte and get up to 50 by then in a 30-mile zone. And I've watched so many kids run across Del Norte trying to escape those cars, and I cannot thank you enough. And to, I'm sure everybody's surprised, people actually know how to make a turn onto H and I, even if there's a bike lane, even if there's a bulb out. I'm, I've just been so pleasantly impressed with the, um, learning ability of the drivers in Eureka. They've managed to do it, and I no longer hear drag races going past my house day and night. Um, there are still a few, um, but I cannot thank you enough. I, I've been involved since the beginning. I know what the arguments were against it. And as someone who's lived there for 45 years, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Deborah.
Keep prepared.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Anna. This is my sister Addie. We're here to. We're here to invite you to our lemonade stand on June 1st. Our goal.
Uh huh. What's your goal?
Our goal is to sell 250 cups of lemonade.
And 10%?
And we're giving 10% to charity. I hope you guys can make it.
Yay! Thank you.
It's gonna be in front of Costco.
Wonderful.
Sidewalk.
Thank you.
There's flyers going around for you guys. Thank you.
City Clerk Powell is giving you each, um, a pin because we appreciate you being here and sitting through our meeting and being a part of the civic process. So your lemonade stand is at Costco, I heard you say, June 1st, and you want to sell at least 250 cups, is that right? Yeah, awesome. So everybody get down to Costco. Thank you so much. Yeah. Good job. Is there anybody else in the audience that wanted to share during public comment? Seeing no one, we'll look over to Zoom. Do you see anybody on Zoom? Nicholas Harris. Hello and welcome. Nicholas?
Hi. Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Nick Harris, and I'm, uh, race director for the Connecticut Grand Championship. And I would just, in advance of the, the consent vote tonight, I'd like to thank you all for considering, um, our request to waive some of our fees for the use of Halverson Park. You know, in, in a post-COVID world, we really struggled to continue bringing the Connecticut Grand Championship as a free service to the county of Humboldt. And as, as a, somebody who was born and raised in, in Humboldt County, and just sort of always assumed that the Connecticut Grand Championship was always going to be there, I have to say at this point, now that I'm intimately involved putting the race on, every little bit helps. And again, I just really want to thank you, the city council, for taking up, uh, taking up our request tonight. And, and we hope to see you all down at Halverson this coming Saturday. Thank you.
Glorious. Thanks, Nick. Do you see anybody else?
Anyone else on Zoom, please raise your hand. I see no one.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to public hearings. Public hearing and resolution confirming and ordering special assessments for unpaid garbage and recycling collection fees. Project manager, Protsker.
Yeah. Okay.
It's an evening for technical difficulties. Appreciate your patience, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robyn Protsker with the Community Services Department, and tonight is the public hearing for the unpaid garbage pe, fees, not peas, from 2023. Okay, so Eureka has mandatory curbside garbage and recycling service, and it is the property owner's responsibility, not the tenants', to maintain the service and comply with the ordinance. Uh, delinquent accounts are to be collected, uh, per California Government Code Section 25831, which establishes the procedure to record a lien or a special assessment against a property. Uh, the delinquent accounts tonight are from the year 2023, and they have been unpaid for a period of 60 or more days after the date upon which they were billed. All property owners were sent a final notice on April 25th of this year, which was not less than 10 days from tonight's hearing, and property owners also received quarterly notices in April, August, and November of last year and March of this year. So as of May 14th, there are 433 properties on the list. Forty-three final notices were returned to us, uh, so they are not included on the final report, and property owners will still have 20 days from tonight to make a payment and be removed from that list before it goes to the county for special assessment. So the recommended action for tonight is to hold a public hearing and hear any objections or protests, to make adjustments if deemed necessary, and then to adopt a resolution providing for the collection of the fees through the special assessment process. And I am available for questions.
Councilmember Moulton?
Could you go back one slide at my question? I think you had answered. Uh, so what happens to the folks whose mail is undeliverable?
Um, they go to collections, but that oftentimes doesn't guarantee a full reimbursement of the amount owed, which is why the special assessment process is the preferred process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I'm, I'm curious how this compares to previous years. Did the numbers go up? Did they go down?
It's pretty, uh, similar to last year. I, the page didn't print where I had last year's numbers, but they're almost actually identical.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, we will, um, open this public hearing. Is anybody here from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in-house, is there anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Or just a motion. Councilmember Fernandez? I saw your hand.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if there's a recommended motion or I move to adopt a resolution of the city council, providing for collection of these fees. Does that work?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. And now we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted, thank you, by one motion. Pursuant to city council resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item of the, on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, and there will be no separate discussion of these items. And so my understanding is F2, F3, and F6 are being pulled. Um, and councilmember Castellano, did you want to?
Yes, I'm, pardon me, I'm going to recuse myself for F2 and F3. Um, the organization I work for is a fiscal sponsor for the group that's seeking the waiver for F2, and, um, though I'm not, uh, directly financially involved with F3, um, the organization I work for is partnering with, um, them on an event, so just in an abundance of caution and clarity, I'm going to recuse myself for that item as well.
Okay, so let's go with F2 first, city manager's lottery.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, mayor and council. Um, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Eureka High School Floral for the flowers that they brought us for this meeting.
Yes. Go Eureka High, go Loggers.
Uh, the first item, F2, is a request for a fee waiver for the rental of Halverson Park. Uh, Black Humboldt and NAACP have, um, put together another event, um, that this will be the second year that it'll be at Halverson Park, and they're requesting council waive the fees for the park rental at Halverson Park. If there's any questions from council, I can answer them.
Any questions? No question? Oh, okay, seeing no questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Uh, councilmember Bauer?
Motion to approve request for waiver of fees for the rental of Halverson Park and the Adorni Center to host the 2024 Juneteenth Cultural Festival.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano recused four yeses, motion carries.
Great. Moving on to F3, uh, request for fee waiver for 2024 Kinetic Sculpture Race Day One and Kinetic Fest and Camping Ordinance Suspension.
Thank you, mayor. You pretty much just gave the whole report there. So, so once again, this is for Halverson Park, which is occurring this weekend, um, the kinetic sculpture race. Um, this weekend is going to be a little unique, they're gonna, um, drop in at our boat launch in, um, at our marina and come out at Samoa, which is different. Now, is that not, uh, Katy, Texas?
It's just not unique, is all. It just happens every, like.
Okay, sorry. My bad. I, I got a weird look, so I had to check on that. Um, so this, this, uh, agenda item is to, um, request a waiver and, um, council's approval of a waiver for the park rental at Halverson Park, and also to suspend our camping ordinance for that evening because they, um, tent camp out there and have, I believe this year's going to be much more of a festival. Um, so, um, they're asking for those two things as part of this agenda item. If there's any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
Questions from council? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing none, how about Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Quite correct. Okay, bring it back to council for a motion in a second.
Oh, I, I guess I have to do it. Can I move staff recommendation? Can I move staff recommendation?
Second.
Please vote.
And it's queen lot of paint buckets, by the way.
Councilmember Castellano asked for yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, this brings us to item F6, Finance Director at Will. Okay, this brings us to item F6, Finance Director at Will Agreement, and that will be City Manager Slattery.
Thank you again, Mayor. And this item here is an amendment to the at-will agreement for our finance director. Saff is looking to authorize a city manager to execute an amendment to the finance director's at-will agreement. This item came up as a part, as council is aware and most people are aware, we are going through contract negotiations with our current unions. As a part of that, we also discuss unrepresented employees. As a part of that discussion, we're looking at bringing back to council a resolution that kind of separates out our unrepresented folks. So we have basically contract employees, which are department heads, and then we have those that aren't contract employees that are unrepresented. As a part of that discussion, we were looking at the different contracts. I had always been under the assumption that our finance director was compensated by the city for his participation in a contract with Humboldt Bay Fire. Ever since the JPA was formed, the finance director has been assigned as the finance director for Humboldt Bay Fire. The district, which is the parent agency for that, does compensate the city, I believe it's $5,000. The city has not made that same contribution for the extra added work outside of the job description of the finance director. So when we were going through these contracts, recognizing that we all have different contracts, whether it's me, the city manager, or other department heads, obviously different levels of responsibility, some department heads get paid more than others, have different things in their contracts. I felt that this was an oversight and needed to be addressed because the amount of work, being the finance director for Joint Powers Authority is above and beyond what is in the job description for our finance director. And so I wanted to make that right and add a 5% deferred comp contribution for his at-will agreement. It's similar to the deferred comp agreement that we have with our city clerk and assistant city manager. Similar to that for jobs that are above and beyond what's in the job description. So if there's any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
So going back, this, the expectations for this role then for the finance director were, was the JPA outlined as part of the duties?
No, the job description for our finance director very clear. It references city departments and city management staff. The finance department under this summary is to provide financing, accounting, purchasing, and information services for city departments, is coordinating assigned activities with other city departments, and also to provide highly responsible and complex professional assistance to city management staff.
But this is also outlined in the JPA that the city's finance director, but it wasn't reflected when we put this job out to post.
That's why I was surprised. This was formed back in 2015. And as a part of that, I had made the assumption that this was something that was compensated for back then. And come through this process here, found that that wasn't the case and felt that it was appropriate to make that right.
And while I appreciate at least you owning up to this kind of oversight, how did that oversight continue at least until now?
Because we hadn't had discussions at this level about that resolution. Like I said, the resolution that we currently have that describes unrepresented employees has them all grouped together. And our HR director had come to me, I believe, a week ago, two weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago, to discuss that resolution about separating out unrepresented employees with contract employees, and then all the others that are unrepresented, which are the confidential employees, project managers, senior planners. There's a list of them that are considered to be unrepresented and not a part of our Teamsters Union or our EPOA Union.
And I'm curious, at the moment, do we have any other open contracts?
This wasn't an open contract, meaning, what do you mean, open contract?
Are we in any other negotiations at this point? With city or JPA?
We are, we have a tentative agreement with our Teamsters Union and are waiting on them to ratify. I believe the votes already happened, and I believe we'll be coming back to council with that second meeting and hopefully the first meeting in June, but likely the second. But the EPOA, as you are aware, has been ratified and adopted.
I see no one.
Wasn't on. I'm sorry. Does anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Second chance? Seeing none, we'll bring it to Zoom.
Anyone on Zoom? I see none.
Thank you. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Bauer?
I motion to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the finance director's at-will agreement with Lane Millar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
My mic's not on. Four yes votes, motion carries.
And with that being said, we do need to go back and approve the balance of the consent calendar. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the balance of the consent calendar as written.
Second.
It's been a while, friends. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. Legislative action correspondent, does anybody have anything? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get to prepare. I just found this one from CalCities. It's AB2236, Bauer Cahann, no relation. And it's to relook at the plastic bags, because you know, the whole grocery stores and whatnot got around the ban on plastic bags by making thick plastic bags, which increased the amount of plastic trash by like double. And so this bill and its companion bill in the Senate is 1053. Both of them would fix that little oversight and eliminate a huge, I think it's 223,000 pounds of plastic per year from these bags alone. So I'd like to see us support that bill and put something together for approval at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no ordinance and resolutions. Future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to city manager reports. Wind energy update.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council, once again. So as you all are aware, and I believe the public is aware, there was a trip from the community to go out to Massachusetts to go look at existing wind energy projects that are out there. And so representatives from the county, from the city of Arcata, from the city of Fortuna, from tribes, from, and a large group of people ended up going out there. It was very beneficial, I believe. We sent myself, Assistant City Manager Powell, as well as Project Manager Asbury to the location. And it's under final picks, upper right corner of the desktop should be. There you go, just above my head. There you go, yeah. Okay, so the trip started off in New Bedford. We ended up going to two locations. It was a very quick trip. And we started off in New Bedford. New Bedford is, as you can see, very much similar to Eureka. It has a port. It's a pretty old town. The first day that we got there, we were in a conference to have discussions with commercial fishermen, with the federally recognized tribe out there, and with some of the folks that are a part of the Vineyard Corporation. New Bedford, there's the port. New Bedford is very similar in sense of being like Eureka. And it also is the main location for where they receive the materials for wind energy. You can go back. Is that Oz doing that? Slow down, Oz. Okay. And so at New Bedford, this is just outside of the whale museum that we're at, which was super cool. But we heard a bunch of talks about, you know, the process of getting to where they were at, had discussions with commercial fishermen, had discussion with some tribal members there. New Bedford is where they receive all of the, I can't remember the term, blades. They receive the blades and then the structures themselves, and they receive them in piecemeal, and I'll show you a picture of that in a second. But what was really interesting was it's very similar to the processes that we're going through now. There's tribal, there was tribal opposition, there's commercial fishermen opposition. And it was very interesting to speak to the folks out there. When we spoke to the commercial fishermen, they were very surprised at some of the ancillary opportunities that came out of wind energy. One of those opportunities, which they say has actually been more popular than whale watching, is doing charters out to the turbines themselves and taking folks out there to the turbines to view those charters. And so a lot of those commercial fishermen have picked that up and added it to their charter business. Another benefit that they found out of this is they have a survey boat that has to survey the transmission line. It's a 35-mile-long transmission line that connects the turbines to onshore at Vineyard End, Martha's Vineyard End. I forget the other town, but either way, these are very large boats. It's very hard for them to find, see fishing gear and know fishing gear, whether it's lobster traps or they do a lot of trawling out there and a lot of different gear that's out there for them to potentially hurt, to hit. So those surveying companies have hired the commercial fishermen as survey boats for them. And they follow that and they tell them where the fishing gear is and have them avoid that and causing any problems for the commercial fishermen. So I found that really interesting. Another part of this day was we went and did some tours. Next slide, please. Another interesting thing in the discussions with Vineyard, they do plan on making more scholarships available to bring people out to do the same type of tour that our staff has done. So I've made recommendations for Eureka City Schools or definitely some sort of school entity to be a part of that process. This has turned out to be a really big program in New Bedford and other towns along the coastline there. They have curriculum starting from fifth grade all the way up through trade school. And this is Bristol Community College. It's not in Bristol, Connecticut, but it's in New Bedford. And this is where those fifth-grade classes all throughout the region come and receive this curriculum. Let me go to the next slide. And this is some more of the same. Let me go to the next slide. And then after that, in the afternoon, we went over to the location where these, where all the parts are dropped off. And so what they do is these, those big tall structures there are basically the base and then the extension to that base of that. And then on the right, and I'll show another picture, are the blades. And so what they do is they receive all this material from overseas. It gets stored here, and then, next slide, please. This is the barge that they put it on. So right there, you see two very tall structures. And then there's, you can see a little kind of cockpit pilot thing behind those blades. So anyway, this is a fully loaded barge. This barge gets loaded with all that material and then gets towed out to sea. Now, in our version of this, when it comes, is we'll be constructing these things onshore and then towing them out. So this is a little bit different. The reason why it's possible here is their continental shelf is very shallow. And where they're out 35 miles, it's only 120 feet deep. It's thousands of feet deep where we're at. So it's nothing there, so this makes it possible for them to do it this way. But anyway, this is in New Bedford. And then that evening, we stayed overnight and then woke up early in the morning, a little too early, and then headed to another town. You can go to the next stop. And we ended up going to this town. It's about 14 miles from that town out to Martha's Vineyard. And then from Martha's Vineyard out, it's another 15 or 20 miles out to where this facility is. This is their kind of station that they have out there. That's a helipad there. I believe there's 12 residential units there. This is where those trade schools come in. Individuals do go to trade school and learn how to work out here. They get flying in on a helicopter, flown in on a helicopter, and then they're, stay there during, you know, the fabrication of these things. And so what they've done, you can see in the background, it's a little small stump. There's hundreds and hundreds of those out there, and those are connected to the ocean floor. And it's basically the very bottom base of where these things are put in. So they've inserted all those, and then next line. What they do is this is the ship that construction, that crane is the same size crane as the one that was on the shoreline that was next to the barge. Those boats actually have hydraulic posts that go all the way down to the bottom of the ocean, 120 feet deep. And it suspends the boat above it. And then they, so that barge will be pulled out here. It'll pull up alongside this boat. That crane will take it off of the barge, the first base part, put it on top of the pillar next to it, then add the other one on top of it, and then put the little control station, and then add all of the blades on top of it. So really interesting and a little bit different than what we're doing, but it's definitely showing that it works out. While we were on this boat trip, there was a bunch of folks from Martha's Vineyard, both from their, what did they call it? It's not the county, it's their commission? Yeah, there's like a county commission that's basically the planning department for the whole place. It's a very unique place. There's 16,000 people that live on Martha's Vineyard total throughout the year. It increases to well over 150 during the summertime. They have six different individual cities that are there. So we spoke to representatives of all of those. Things they said, it's been a game changer for them as far as permanent jobs, because the majority of their jobs have either been in the retail industry or commercial fishing. And this has made a big difference in that. And so, anyway, and then the next slide just shows one of them. It's really trippy when you get next, because you're on a, we were on about a, I don't know, 50, 60-foot-long boat. But you get next to them, it's, they're huge, don't get me wrong, but it's not as huge as you think. These are, I think, 750 feet to the top of the blade, to the ocean floor. The ones that'll be built out here will be a little bit larger, about 900 feet, I believe. And the difference between those, obviously, like I said, they'll be manufactured here, they'll be put onto their base and towed out to the ocean, and they'll be tethered to the bottom of the ocean, because obviously we couldn't fix these to the bottom of the ocean that deep. So they'll use lines to tether them to the bottom of the ocean floor. But really interesting. We're still in discussions with Vineyard and RWE, and they have every intention on having some more folks from Humboldt County to go out there and check out the operations. But really interesting and it was well worth the trip. And thank you, Humboldt County, for getting us out there. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Malton?
Did you come across any useful cautionary tales, stuff that we should be watching out for?
Yeah, and I meant to bring that up. I think the distribution is going to be huge here. Obviously, we already have existing problems. While we were out there, I forget who was telling us, but it may have been one of the commissioners, but they had a project in New York that wasn't, this is all in federal waters. It's outside of three miles. So it's federal waters, you're dealing with Boham, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. And in New York, they had a project that was inside of the three miles. They were very close to finalizing the deal. And it's never really said in the collective, in the community benefit agreements or anything like that about who's going to be responsible for dealing with that onshore distribution and how it's going to get there. Obviously, for them, it got to such a problem, they didn't have any, you know, government funds or a willing contractor to pay for that distribution, and the project failed. Here, I see a lot of issues. If there's not another 400 to $2, $3 billion fund from the feds or the state in order to take care of that problem, not only to get it to where it can be used, but also to make sure that Eastern Humboldt and Southern Humboldt aren't in the situation that they're at now and they're benefiting from this. But if there's not that government money and the contractor's not willing to do it, having our local PG&E do that would be a huge burden on our ratepayers, and that's going to be a big problem. So that's something that we need to figure out and something that should be starting to be discussed sooner than later.
Any, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I'm curious how long it took from port development- Yeah, I'm curious how long it took from port development to deployment of the wind mills, or, you know, turbines. Did they mention that?
Yeah, they didn't, I don't think they needed much port development. Like, they don't need, they didn't have to have a Redwood Marine Terminal type of thing because of the way that it's set up, you know what I mean? They're bringing in their stuff. They just got a barge there, and they put all the stuff on a barge and roll it out there. If it was that way, I'm sure it would be a lot quicker for us. I think it was, the permit and everything, I think it was, yeah, 2012, 2009, I think, is when Vineyard was really getting into this and talking about it. But I think 2012 was when they started getting serious about it. But they have, I think there was 200 and something out there? Wait, no, excuse, they only had 12 out there, I'm sorry. And, but they have, I think, like 10 or 12 different contracts, and they plan on putting like 2,000-something turbines out there. And it's going to generate the electricity for 25% of all of Massachusetts.
Wow. Pretty cool.
But it, a lot quicker for them, obviously, because the port development wasn't necessary. They just bring the stuff on, store it on existing property, and then put it on a barge and take it out there. But I think from an investment standpoint, you know, all the others, yeah, it was a lot.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Kind of following that, that line of thought from Councilmember Bauer, do you recall the project timelines from start to finish, how long it took?
So that's what I was saying. I think that, I think permitting and dealing with permitting and stuff was 2009. I think actually doing stuff and building infrastructure was 2012. So it was about 10 years. So they've been there for over a year. And there was a smaller project done, and I forget where, but they have another project elsewhere, too. Yeah. And by the way, Martha's Vineyard, not what you think it is. No, I'm not saying it's good, bad, or it's nice, don't get me wrong. But I tripped out, and I was like, oh, there's 16,000 people here, that's it. And there's six different towns, six different fire departments. It was trippy for 16,000 people.
Trippy. Awesome. Councilmember Fernandez?
It was weird, excuse me.
And then, and then as we're still within our community crafting, what, what community benefits, we'd like to see, were there any takeaways that you?
I wanted to have more conversations about that. I was really interested. I think that as soon as I got back, I contacted Ted and Michelle at the Wia tribe, and I think that they would benefit from going back there. I didn't have that much conversation with them. They only had the chief there, and he was pretty sought after. So I didn't get a chance to speak with them. But those are conversations that we need to have. I think that there's going to be some things happening here locally to hopefully better define how that looks and what's going to happen.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to council reports, and we will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. It was relatively quiet couple of weeks. I had two HWMA meetings where we approved the budget for this fiscal year. And just so you know, I mean, come out to, there's a plethora of things happening this weekend, you know, a lot of great festivities in Halverson Park, the launch of the kinetic sculpture races on Sunday, into the water. So I hope to see folks out enjoying the creative pursuits of our community.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any travel to report. Did attend a JPA meeting for the Humboldt Bay Fire immediately after our last council meeting on May the 8th. Just want to appreciate all of our firefighters. I see some in the audience this evening. Hi, guys. All of their efforts and continued training. I am looking forward to the Forest Moon Festival. I think that the presentation was really great. They focused a lot on like the one big party with the movies. But I just want to point out that there's businesses all over town joining in the fun. There was customers were all over Old Town last year. So there's that one big thing happening, yes, but check out the website, because there's things happening all over, including like discounts and food specials and games and just, everybody really gets into it. So come check it out if you want to see storm troopers invading the gazebo in a really terrifying way. It was entertaining. And of course, the kinetic grand championship coming up, which does happen in Eureka. But I'd like to point out that it's actually 10 events in five municipalities over three days. There's actually 17 locations for the kinetic grand championship. So if you can make it out to like a heavy hike like Dead Man's Drop in the middle of our world-class Wiggy Dunes, that is an unbelievable location to watch some crazy people do some crazy stuff on experimental machines. And then, of course, there are the more accessible, family-friendly, wheelchair and stroller accessible events like Halverson Park, like the Arcata Plaza, like the Finish Line in Ferndale. But kinetics is really unique to Humboldt. And it is, it's an Eureka event as much as it's an Arcata or Ferndale event. And I highly recommend everybody go out and see it wherever they can and give those racers some glory, because they need it. Oh, and if you can't make it out, our local PBS station, Keet TV, will be covering it live from the plaza water entry and from the finish line. So there's plenty of opportunity to share that wonderful cultural asset with folks all over the world if you happen to know somebody that would like that, but doesn't live here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
No travel to report and no official business in the last few weeks for me. It's been rather calm. The only thing coming up tomorrow is the Central Labor Council's dinner, where I believe they are recognizing Councilmember Castellano as Community Member of the Year. So congratulations.
Well deserved.
That's my report.
Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. Yeah, also attended a JPA meeting. It was great. And I only had one other meeting, I, RCEA, Redwood Coast Energy Authority Finance Committee, where I was nominated chair. Another fun opportunity to look at budgets. No, actually, it's interesting, I swear. That's kind of, that's kind of it for the past week. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Conchera Stilge?
Okay, I do have some travel to report. So Supervisor Arroyo wasn't able to go to the Wind Conference in Sacramento. So I went in her place, and I got to be there with Supervisor Bone, Economic Development Director Scott Adair for the county, Alicia Hayes, Connie Stewart from Cal Poly. And anyway, and it was actually, it was really good. It was really informative for me. I mean, this is something I'm very interested in anyway, because I kind of want to, you know, I am very curious about kind of like ongoing impacts, like what do we know? Because ours is going to be different here. You know, it's, it's not like, they're kind of inventing the wheel as they go in many ways. There's already technology, but this is a different kind of situation because of the type of land that we have here. And it was very interesting, of course, like some of the discussions, like transmission and stuff like that, you know, like how, how are we going to do that? I had an opportunity to attend, there was lots of discussion around, you know, like how do we make sure that, you know, we have good tribal partnerships? And I don't know if you saw that Congressman Huffman just requested that there be somebody appointed specifically to work with the tribes up here, which I think is really important. That being said, when I attended the breakout session, you know, I think the concerns of tribal people, we did have tribes that attended actually from back east for the Sacramento one. The feeling, the mood, and the temperature is completely different when you're in the room with people from tribes than it is when you're in the room with the people who stand a profit. And I just think that that's a really important thing for us to just continue to note. And anyway, and so, you know, it is very interesting. It's going to be interesting to kind of see like how that kind of moves forward. And I got to, one of the advantages to getting to do something like this is there was an informal thing the night before. And I got to talk with CEO of RWE, Sam Eaton, for about a half an hour. And I think one of the nice things about something like that, you know, is that then I could just pepper him with questions and find out so much. So I actually was going to ask, the best way, I took just scads of notes that, you know, are absent of my own impressions, which I'm sharing here. But I just took notes on what people said and what was discussed in some of the slides and that kind of thing. And I don't know if there's a good way for me to kind of like get that to council where I'm not like violating anything. Sands my opinion on it, but just kind of the notes that I took. Do you want to?
I'd be happy to have a longer conversation with you about that, once I understand exactly what you're talking about. So feel free to come to my office and talk to me about that. Thank you.
So that's my report.
Well, again, thank you, everybody, for being here for this lovely short meeting. We're adjourned.